I want to share this because it went over very well in our breakout room. I want to share this. I want you to know that yesterday is history. Tomorrow is a mystery. But today is a gift, and that is why we call it the present. So, welcome to the present.
Wow, thank you, Carolyn.
Well said, well said.
Wonderful, Carolyn. Thank you.
Well, let's open it.
All right. On that beautiful note from Carolyn Holloway, I want to welcome everyone to the Rotary Club of Georgetown. My name is George Anne Hewitt, and I'm so pleased to have you join us in this virtual environment. We've been meeting virtually since November 19th, when Williamson County went into the red phase. Prior to that, we were having hybrid meetings, and we're crossing our fingers and hoping very much that we get to come back to having hybrid meetings very soon. This is an exciting week to be part of Rotary and the Rotary Club of Georgetown because Rotary International is celebrating its 116th birthday or anniversary this week on the 23rd, the February 23rd in 1905. Rotary Club had its meeting, and so, and then our club, the Georgetown Rotary Club, is having its 59th anniversary on Sunday, February 28th. This month is also Peace and Conflict Prevention and Resolution Month in Rotary. Rotary dedicates its months months to various causes, and so this month is about peace. And so I just wanted to share that. And I don't know, Chris was with us earlier, but I'm not sure that he is here now. If he is, I did not get out reminders this week to the people who were helping with the beginning of the program, so he may not be here. And if he's not, I'm going to ask Dr. Swain to offer our invocation.
I don't hear Chris, so thank you, George Anne. I'd like to invite you to consider words from one of my favorite theologians for our invocation this morning. It's entitled Courage to Live, and I'd like to just share some words from Dr. Howard Thurman. Give me the courage to live this day. I seek courage to live. It is not difficult to keep going, to keep the flame of life burning as if it were to breathe where life. The daily round may very easily be merely the daily round. The common chores persist, going to bed and getting up, eating and making provisions for subsequent meals, talking day by day the same talk, using the same set of well-worn concepts, cliches, and tired words. I seek the courage to live this day. How easily I slip into the mood that is desolatory, that quietly informs my mind that tomorrow I can begin the new way. Tomorrow I can make the fresh turning in my road. Courage to strike out on a path I have never trod before. Courage to make new friends. Courage to yield myself to the full power of the dream. Courage to yield my life with abiding enthusiasm to the Spirit of God and the wide reaches of His creative undertakings among the children of men. This I seek today. Give me the courage to live this day. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ron, very much. Roger, would you lead us in the pledge?
Will please join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
Flag.
United States of America.
The Republic. One nation.
Nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
Thank you, Roger. And Bill Connor is going to lead us in our milestones, so if you'll get ready to lift your glass or mug.
Birthdays, Jared Parfer, February 26th, Tom Morton, February 26th, Chris Cash, February 28th. He's got the same birthday as the club's starting date. Fred Sellers, February 28th, him too. Will, what is that, Boynton? Boynton, March 2nd, Brad Curley, March 2nd. Anniversaries, Gary and Dana Zee. Zee, March 2nd. Club anniversaries. Jeanette Harrington, seven years, February 28th. Marissa Austin, eight years, March 1. Mark Beetz, 34 years, March 1. Todd Smith, 14 years, March 1. Michael Cox, three years, March 2nd. Danny Swafford, 20 years, March 2nd. Fred Sellers, 32 years, March 3rd. Salute.
Salute. Thank you, Bill. All right, do we have any guests that anybody has brought that you would like to introduce? And I know we have Carolyn Holloway here. Do we have any other visiting Rotarians? We've already decided Carolyn is one of our own too, but I always, I just love that she's joining us each week when she can.
Tommy Hall, are you with us? Did you join us, Tommy, today? Or Kara Powell? Kara, did you join us from the Rock Center? They look like they were able to make it. They were invited, but I know they're both busy people.
All right, thank you, George. All right, we're going to do recognitions and announcements, and I'm going to run through these pretty quickly here. Because some of these are items that we're repeating each week. We have Arila Camp that happens in the summer. This is for youth leadership. And we have attached the application to be a volunteer for this camp to previous weekly Rotary updates, but if you are interested in helping prepare a meal, we're going to be hosting our club, we'll be hosting a dinner on July 6th. And the reason we start early recruiting folks for this volunteer service is because you do have to go through a background check, and so it's important to kind of get this lined up early so that we know that everybody has passed. And so anyway, just if you're interested in that, we'd love, last year this camp got canceled, so we're very excited that that we have the opportunity to host it, host a dinner there this year. Also attached to your Rotary Weekly Update was the Invitational Golf Tournament signup for teams. And so we encourage you, if you're forming a team, to get that filled out and get it started and share it with any others that you think might want to form a team and participate in our golf tournament. We received some thank you notes, and again, these were attached to your Rotary Weekly Update. These two were from Righton Center for Kids and the USO, and again, they're thanking us for Field of Honor beneficiary and affiliate monies that have been distributed to them. I want to say a special thanks to, and I hope I'm not missing anybody. I looked through the spreadsheet. I asked for some help last week during the winter storm from some members of our club to get on the phone, and some of our younger members may not even know what this photograph is of. Phone, but really, I think all of us were tested last week with regard to communications and technology and access to the things that we normally use to stay in touch. And I know I mentioned in the Rotary Weekly Update that I would work offline on my computer, and as soon as the internet would come back up, I had to try to get things out really quickly. Well, these folks, Carol Hardy, Jeannie Cox, Steve Dooley, George Oliver, and Kat Phelps, helped get on the phone and call, I think we were able to reach every member of our club either by leaving a message or actually talking with them. And I know for me, that felt really good to be able to touch base with people and see how they were doing in the midst of all that was going on last week. So I really want to thank them for taking time to reach out and provide feedback on how everybody was doing. Dennis, do you want to? Check in.
I'm here. Well, firstly, after the week we've gone through, I'm not sure if anybody's got any happy dollars, but maybe they do. I certainly do from my standpoint. I've not only had my two shots, but I've also gone through my two weeks of post-vac quarantine. So my granddaughter this week was able to absorb the biggest hug she's had in a long time. So I got a happy dollar for that. And I also have a happy dollar for the fact that I was one of the blessed people who was in a bubble for the last week. I live in the northwest corner of Round Rock, and because we're close to the hospital and the fire station and all those good things, we had zero issues for the whole week. We had power, we had water, no broken pipes. Almost ran out of wine, which was a serious issue, but so I'm paying a dollar for being the blessed guy. So anybody else out there got some happy dollars?
Yeah, Dennis, I'll do $2, because Holly and I each finally, through her work, we've got appointments for the vaccine. March 17th at Advent Health in Colleen. So if anybody's interested, yeah, so that's $2 there. So she did the investigative work and found it, and we jumped on it. So March 17th, we finally get them.
Yes, Jim, Jim Albers has $5, because I'm a member, I'm a member of the best Rotary Club in Texas. I just so appreciate the effort that went into last week connecting with everybody. And it's just wonderful to be a member of this club, so that's my happy dollar.
I got you for five then. Thank you, Jim.
Dennis, I'd like to do five as well. The little call scheme that George Anne and the rest put together last week, I had problems I didn't even know I had. And I won't say who came over and brought me groceries, but boy, it was a life-saving maneuver. I really appreciate it. We had about, we doubled our population at our house because other people didn't have gas or didn't have heat or water, so that was the problem with that.
Dennis, this is Ron Swain. I want to match Jim Albers's $5. I was gonna put in just $1 because Crystal and I are scheduled for our second vaccine this afternoon, but I'll just put in the $5 because Jim Albers is wearing a green shirt. Green is my favorite color.
You got it.
This is Larry. I'll give $5. My wife and I were able to get our last, our second shot last week. So Dennis, we're kind of like you, we're headed to Plano today after Rotary to see our grandkids who we've not seen in nine months.
I thought Michelle Marshall had a happy dollar.
Where are you, Michelle? She's gone quiet on us.
Dennis, I got a couple of them. For my wife, she's finished her second shot, and then, and then $5 for just a blessed week. You know, yes, it wasn't pleasant or comfortable, but we survived without any major issues, and I'm just so thankful for that.
Was that $7 in total?
That's $10 total.
Five for each. All right, you broke the bank.
Trying to outbid each other here.
Well, we'll do five also because thanks to Scott and Holly, we found out about this place in Colleen, and we're scheduled on the 19th to have our first shots.
All right. Putting me at $5 too, Dennis. Suzy and I got our last shot two weeks ago, so we're good to go.
All right, got you down.
Dennis, Dennis, up mine to $5 from two. What the heck?
I'll call you and raise you too.
You Navy types would, yeah.
Just so you know, we got a running total so far of $7 for this quarter, Scott.
All right.
All right, we're good. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody. For those of you who may not know, these dollars go to our polio pig, and just $2 provides a dose of vaccine for polio to children and adults around the world, so thank you very much. All right, I want to make sure we have plenty of time for our program today, so I am going to introduce a member of our club, Dr. Fred Brent, who is also the District Superintendent for our Georgetown Independent School Districts. And I imagine each of us know what we were dealing with on a small scale, both with regard to COVID and last week's storm, but when you are the leader for a significant system that involves lots of people and property and buildings, you can imagine. So, Dr. Brent, I don't know if you need to share your screen, but I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And if you don't plan to share your screen, I'm going to pin you so everybody can see you.
And.
I wanted to share my screen.
All right, very good.
See if I can figure out how to keep working this, because now I have to move the Zoom icon over, I believe. There we go. Are we working now?
You look great.
It's crazy how everyone has been able to be so technologically gifted over the last several months, although I would have been open to just regular technology training as opposed to going through COVID to have to do all this, but anyway. Guys, yeah, it's great to see you. God, good to see some names, faces, and hear some voices. To say the least, it's been pretty, pretty busy in Georgetown ISD ever since, well, March 13th of last year. Our world was really shaken by COVID and sending kids home and figuring out how to navigate all things education for our students. And so it's good to see your faces. I desperately need to get back to engaging with you guys on a more regular basis, so I appreciate all you're doing, and I appreciate the service you do for our community, and it's good to see everyone keep pressing on and continuing to meet. So one of the things I'll just, what I thought we would do today is, I know there's a timestamp to this event, and I'm going to try to share a lot of information with you, but also allow for some time so you guys ask me questions. And some of the slides I'll go through fairly quickly. We think we've covered it before. But one of the things I just want to make sure I communicate to you guys is, you know, the Rotary Organization is obviously a worldwide organization that does great things for human beings across our world, and it's driven by a simple four-way test, right? Is it true, is it fair to all concerned? Will Bill goodwill and better friendships, will it be beneficial to all concerned? You know, and just, just the test is really important, and it's a foundational part of being a Rotarian. And one of the things that I think is really critical to any organization is its foundation. And the foundation for Georgetown ISD is our vision, mission, and beliefs, and it's that guiding force for us. And so what I can tell you over since, since before March 13th occurred, but since March 13th and especially during last week in the ice storm, you know, our dream is to be home of the most inspired students, students who are inspired to pursue their passions, and we give them the skills and the the permission to do that, and that are empowered leaders, all district employees are leaders in our organization, and that they have the skills and permission to do good things for people, right? And we want to inspire and empower every learner to lead, grow, and serve, and we believe in adult learning and not just the students, but the adults. And so we're all on this path of continuous growth. And what I can say is, if you look at our district beliefs, guys, you know, when this happened, we knew our community needed us to open schools. And in the ice storm, we knew our community needed us to open schools. We knew that our students, all of our actions towards opening school over this past 10 days needed to be focused on getting kids in buildings where we can take care of them, we can feed them, and we can meet their social, emotional, and learning needs. And, and all of these beliefs, the storm that was COVID and the storm that was called Yuri, I think is the name of the winter storm now, revealed the importance of living by your beliefs as a human being, but as an organization. And these beliefs on your screen really drove us, whether it was the hundreds of people or thousands of people we fed on Saturday, all of our backpack buddies, that community engagement enhances our educational experience, our backpack buddies, partners. We got food out to kids last Saturday, and we had water distribution for our students and their families and staff if they needed it, you know. Whether it's ice storm or COVID or everyday life, these beliefs have been critical to us. And so I'm proud of our school board and our community for these beliefs and the fact that we've been honoring them. And it's really important to know that just the, this is a very empowering thing, and we've really, really been blessed to have those. Those are our foundations. So obviously, it's been a busy year, and we've talked to you about some of the things we've been up to. You know, we opened two amazing new schools that we didn't get to have a ribbon cutting for because it was the pandemic. However, last night, Citizens Advisory Committee meeting met in Wolf Ranch Elementary. And as soon as we get to remove some of these barriers of COVID, we want to get you guys in our schools and see those schools. So we have Wolf Ranch and Williams Elementary School that were approved in the 2018 bond election. And these campuses have been up and running since the first day of school this school year, and we love the space that affords our students to learn and our teachers to really grow their skill set, and been excited about those two campuses. So you as taxpayers, thank you for the gift of these two schools. Our students, thank you. Our staff, thanks you. And I think I may have shared this last time we gotten together, but we've continued to enhance our one-to-one for every student through Chromebook distributions and our board and our community bond funds have really helped in doing that. So the bond elections that you approved in 2015 and 2018 made this possible with the infrastructure and the devices needed to pull this off as no small feat. And thankful for our team for making sure we got those distributed to our students. And one thing we'll talk to you about today is, you know, the accountability we felt to you as a community, to our parents, to our students, want to make sure that we're doing all we can to grow the whole child and the development of every child and the effectiveness of all aspects of our organization. So one of the things that our board has been really good about is we're trying to hold ourselves accountable to student growth, whether it's in numeracy and literacy, whether it's in social, emotional learning, and we'll talk about those targets. But, you know, we have an accountability to you as a community, and while we do have an accountability system, you may or might not have heard that the state has frozen its accountability system again this year. So the most recent student performance data we have from a Star State Assessment is from 2019, and I'm proud of the work that we've been doing since that time and excited for the growth of our students. We've started the equity planning process. This is no small feat. It's complex, it takes a lot of work, and there's a lot of great men and women serving on this team to build our equity plan and how we bring more consciousness to equity and more intentionality around every learner. Our mission says, inspire and empower every learner to lead, grow, and serve, and that's just what it must be. We must be intentional about every student in our district, regardless of who they are, where they're from, and all the other identifying dynamics that are out there. The bottom line is, they're a kid in our organization, and they deserve to be loved, to opportunities to grow and pursue their hopes and dreams. And so that's our, that's our purpose in that work. Oops, sorry. Also, something new you may or may not be aware of, as you can see that website, it's Parent University. It's a website we give to parents that gives them updates on how to navigate a lot of different challenging things that are out there in the life of their student. We launched this, this, at the beginning of this school year through support from our Parent Teacher Association, the President's Council of that group and their feedback and helping us launch this out as a way to help parents have more resources and access to information, and want to make sure that you're aware that that is out there, and that's been something we've been excited about. They're going to talk a little bit about, one of the things we've been working on is future readiness. Our board has a target of, you know, all kids being college, career, or military-ready. Not every child's going to go to college right out of high school, but if they want to, want to help them pursue that passion. Some kids want to go to the job market, and man, we need kids working, and some may want to go to the military. But the bottom line is, is we feel responsible and accountable to you as a community to help every child find direction when they leave Georgetown ISD. And so there's some of the things that we're working on in that is, you'll see some of those in a moment, but the, the targets, and you can see one of those targets is college, career, and military readiness. The rest of our targets here are learner profile attainment, social, emotional learning, early literacy and numeracy, and community-based accountability, and different works of that. One of the things we'll talk about with college, career, military readiness is the different things that we're working on in that is to.
Underneath the nail?
100% of our students by August 2025 leave Georgetown ISD college, career, and military readiness. And there's some of the progress measures we're looking at on there. And we've also this year opened a health and wellness center through a partnership with Lone Star Circle of Care. And what that means is we've taken a portion of the building where Roshart High School is, and we have a Lone Star Healthcare Clinic there. And to where any of our students who need access to healthcare, we can help them get to Lone Star Circle of Care on our campus. If our employees need access to healthcare without having to take a half-day off to go to a doctor's appointment and have to get a substitute teacher or get one of their kiddos to school, if they work in Georgetown ISD or if they go to school in Georgetown ISD, them and their families will have access to this health and wellness center through our partnership with Lone Star Circle of Care. A side note to that is, when working with Lone Star, I said, hey, guys, we have a lot of nurses in the district, and we have a lot of data, and we can help coordinate vaccination distribution. And so Lone Star Circle of Care did identify our site as a COVID-19 vaccine site. And so in the very near future, we will have a nurse at that Lone Star Circle of Care Wellness Center administering the COVID-19 vaccine. And I'm very excited about that. I'm excited about our partnerships with the county. Burka Box Stadium is a vaccination distribution site, and as a matter of fact, they're targeting our Georgetown ISD employees because we want to keep schools open, and we know we need to keep schools open. And the exciting thing about that is our district employees who want the vaccination, we're going to try to make sure they get that vaccination so they'll find more safety and security and come to school every day with kiddos. As far as growing programs, some of the things we've been growing, we're excited about, we're excited about our partnership with Sport Clips and the Cosmetology Program we've launched for our kiddos who can graduate from high school completely certified to go to work. If they go through that program, it's zero cost to them. And if they were to go out and get that certification, that would be, and that training after high school would be thousands and thousands of dollars. Love the fact that we're still building our airplanes. I've been able to fly in one of these things, and it's amazing to watch. We're hoping to grow this program in the future. One of the things from our 2018 bond election was a community charged with designing a new career technical education facility that can be comprehensive for all high schools. And one of the things that we're excited about in the designing of this space that may or may not be considered in the bond election in the future, but we've designed the space, is that we can have more room for this airplane. If you go in that building now, that airplane is upside down, there's wings everywhere, it's a small space, and then we're just kind of outgrowing that space, and so we're excited about the aerospace engineering. Man, culinary arts kiddos, state champions, and growing, and that program's just been amazing for those kiddos there. Obviously, we launched rockets, we talked about that probably before last time I spoke to you, but we're continuing to pursue these sort of opportunities for our kiddos. I love our middle school. This is the Tippet Middle School Principal, Alfonso Longori, in the background. Really proud of the instructional work that Alfonso's been leading. And Future Ready Engineering Project Lead the Way is a middle school engineering program. Love the fact that we're offering that at our middle schools. And, and you know, one of the things that's great about Alfonso is, you know, we've been working on student assessment for learning, and over the last several years, we adopted, we wrote a new curriculum, we've adopted the processes and multiple measures of assessment so we can chart student growth, because we're accountable for growing, providing growth to every child in Georgetown ISD. And I was talking to Alfonso the other day, and when I, one of my coaching sessions with him, and he's talking about how excited he was about the academic work of the students and the progress they're making, and Project Lead the Way is an important outlet for our kiddos in that. Elementary Robotics, guys, if you want to learn how to do coding, which I have no idea what coding really means. I'm not a coder. I don't know how to code, but these kids can code some cool stuff, and they can make some great robots through Legos and other things. So Education Foundation has been an important contributor to growing that coding and robotics program. Building programs, we're continuing to grow college, career, and military-ready programs, 12 industry certifications, you can see those data points. Building programs, we're continuing to grow college career military ready programs, 12 industry certifications. You can see those data points there. You know, bottom line is all students have access to the PSAT in Georgetown ISD for free of charge. And we do not want any barrier. That's a basically a, a, a great indicator of a stall, uh, student's academic preparedness for college and a lot of kids have found the cost of taking the PSAT a financial barrier. So we don't want anything to limit a student from to pursuing their academic dreams. So not only we're going to grow these programs, we're also make sure they're able to take the PSAT if that's what they want to do. And, uh, we've been continuing to reduce the dropout rate and graduation rate continues to outperform the area and the state. And, uh, really proud of the students as they've grown through the process. And, uh, growth and enrollment, you need to know that we're growing. We've had more housing starts uh, this year than any year before. We had a crazy demographic data report from our demographer and, uh, Georgetown continues to grow. We've completed these 2018 bond projects. Uh, all that's a, the far right screen there where my cursor is, that is the addition to Ford Elementary. So they can go up to an 850 student capacity elementary. This is the, the secure walkway at Georgetown High School. Uh, you used to be able to drive off Austin Avenue, come right into the heart of the school. And that was just a safety issue. So we have a really sturdy, secure wall and walkway between the Rashartay and annex for freshmen and, and, uh, sophomore students to the main building and we just reloop this road around right here to take you out back to stadium parking lot. So this was an important move for us to redo some tennis courts. I want to say that's Tippet Middle School and then of course, uh, a lot of other bond projects as well. Right now we are at 11,944 students in Georgetown ISD. We were a little over 12,000 when COVID-19 hit. A lot of people just didn't come to school or they may have checked out and in October, we were at about 11,700 students and more and more students have been coming back since that time and that number continues to grow. But that was just as of, um, January 28th, I believe it was that last enrollment snapshot date. So we're continuing to watch that and we're expecting to see continued growth in Georgetown ISD. Um, you can see this student enrollment projections for elementary schools. This is some data we'll be looking at with CAC, but the bottom line is, uh, when the, when it's yellow, you're nearing capacity. When it's red, you're out of space. And so one of the things that shows with our growth in our middle schools is, uh, you can see that we're going to continue to need to add campuses for a while. And we're talking about this with our citizens advisory committee process. And they started meeting last night, uh, was our first of six meetings and possibly needed seventh. Uh, we'll be going through recommendations from the team is what we think we need for facilities and such. And then we'll be doing community survey in May or June and, uh, survey those projects and be deciding whether or not to have a bond election this coming November. The history of some of our bond elections, you can see over the course of the last several years, here's what this bond election history has been for Georgetown ISD. And the citizens advisory committee process has been very important in helping us assess where we are as a district and get feedback from the community about what some of the things that we're wanting to do and, and pursue. And one of the things that I want to talk about on this is we talked about this last night at citizens advisory committee, but, um, if I'm not mistaken, in July of 1919, this was probably, probably the first bond election that, uh, women were able to vote in, in Georgetown, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want to assume, but I'm pretty sure that's what history is. But, uh, this is interesting, July 24th, 1919. Uh, this article right here, it says mothers of Georgetown on July 24th will be held in the Georgetown ISD, an election of vast importance to you. It is on the question of authorizing the issuance of $100,000 in bonds for the construction of a high school building and equipping saying. Much depends on this question. While it seems that the authorization will be made by an outstanding majority, eternal vigilance is the price of success and we urge you to assist in making your probability a certainty. And assist in placing within the reach of the childhood of the community, the opportunity for education that they are justly entitled to. Insist on every voter supporting the proposal. I just love how that was written. And one of the things that, um, struck me about this article was a lot of things are said in here about the, um, opportunity for education that, that every child is entitled to. And the vigilance of our community since 1919, we have been focused on securing the future of public education. And so, you know, we're working with vigilance towards securing academic growth for every child and numeracy and literacy. Giving them opportunities to pursue their hopes and dreams through creative and innovative programs that you saw earlier. And providing for social, emotional wellness and growth of the whole child through learner profile attainment. And we'll be working with through community-based accountability to where we're focused on securing the hopes and dreams of Georgetown for the students of Georgetown. And when I close, if I was probably use this quote with you before, but this is from a really important book to me called Infinite Game by Simon Sinek. And when you talk about the COVID-19 challenges that we have, when you talk about all of the things that we've experienced in the previous week of the ice storm, our driving force was Georgetown ISD is a foundation of this community. And our students need to be in school. And whether it's a global pandemic or a snowstorm that came from, I don't know where, the bottom line is the taxpayers of Georgetown deserves to have their schools open. The kids need to be in school and we need to try to take care of them physically, mentally and academically every day that we possibly can. And so all of those challenges can really test an organization to its very core. And I'm convinced the vision, mission, beliefs, learner profile of this Georgetown ISD that was shaped by the community that began in 2014 when 300 men and women got together to create a strategic plan. And three months later, they adopted a plan and that's when I got hired and they said, here's your strategic plan and go make this happen. It was like, guys, that was a game changer for us and we're stronger today than we've ever been. Do we have students who need more help? Yes. Are we as good as we want to be? No. But we're holding ourselves accountable for academic growth of all students. We're going to constantly try to get better in that process. And so an infinite-minded leader does not simply want to build an organization that can weather change, but one that can be transformed by it. Resilient organizations may come out the other end of upheaval entirely different than they were when they went in and are often grateful for the transformation. We have faced significant challenges in the course of the last past year, but I will tell you that those challenges have revealed the strength of the character of Georgetown as a city, as a community, as a school district. And what I also know is this, these challenges have actually made us stronger. And I truly believe with alma heart that we will be a stronger school district on the other side of COVID-19 and on the other side of the ice norm, ice storm. And that our community has modeled a community of excellence through all the things that are Georgetown America. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions, but guys, man, I love you and I'm thankful to serve here and I love calling this place home and, and yeah, it's been a tough year, but you know what? We're going to be good and we're going to be stronger for it. So, any questions?
Yeah, um, yeah, Dr. Brent, I had one. Um, how do you get the kids prepared for the military? It's unlike anything they're ever going to experience, trust me. So how do you get them ready for military? Uh, since it couldn't be more different than college.
Yeah, well, some of them are going to find out on their own because they just go sign up for the military and it's like my neighbor across the street. But, uh, our junior ROTC program is amazing. We have great leaders in our JROTC. Any, any high school student in the district can participate in that program. It's housed at East U High School. And they actually have won multiple drill competitions. And, and we allow them opportunities to explore that. So if you want to go all in and explore JROTC, you can definitely, uh, pursue that opportunity. And if students are interested in the military, we can connect them with recruiters to talk and learn about what that's like. But our JROTC is pretty dang awesome.
I would encourage you also to consider people who are act as community liaisons for the Naval Academy or Army, um, Air Force and so on and so forth.
Sounds great. And I, you know, my email is brentf@georgetownisd.org. Um, feel free to email me a contact and I, I can, if there's someone else that we're not working with, I would love to be open to meeting them.
Other questions for Dr. Brent?
Dr. Brent, I'll ask one. Uh, good to see you, sir. The after, in the aftermath of the, the stone mageddon that we had, um, do you know of an immediate need out there across the school district, uh, one central place that we could be of service to, uh, help families?
No, what I do know is that there have on smaller occasions. For example, if we have employees that have reached out, guys, we had employees having to come up to the school to shower to get ready for work and different power and that, you know, a lot of them are getting on their feet, some of them not, but we have connected with different community partners that are providing a lot of those resources, different organizations that have been doing a lot of that work. There were some groups that reached out right away that said, we can provide food, water in different areas. And so Melinda Brasher has been connecting those families, those resources. So we've pretty much served as a conduit to different ones. I can also somewhat representative, I can ask, um, Melinda to reach out to George Ann if need be, but so far it's been a lot of the basics, food and water, and we've been giving them that support as much as we possibly can. Families with home damage, I, I do not know, um, to the extent that there's, there are people needing support from us from that. But when do, we've encouraged employees and families and principals and teachers, when they know of a family need to reach out and get them help. I mean, there's a powerful story of, at East U High School, about a young man that was about to drop out of school and, um, found out what was going on. It was, he had to work because their power was going to be turned out. And the principal, Toya Easter said, I'm going to go get power turned on for you. I'm just going to pay it. We need this kid in school. Well, the bill was $4,000. And, um, she sent out an email to the staff because they wanted to keep this kid in school, doing all they could. Three hours later, they had raised over $4,500 through the staff at East U High School to pay and get this family help. And then Latoya had some other community supports. And, um, Sun City Kiwanis had raised a lot of money that they ended up funneling in a different direction, but the bottom line is they helped this kiddo stay in school. Um, I think the young man now works for us as a custodian, if I'm not mistaken. I know he had a job interview and I said, hey, guys, come on, really? You're going to make him interview? But, uh, anyway, uh, so there's a lot of those stories that are out there that are just hard to tell, but, um, you know, if there was any one thing critically important, I can ask Melinda if there's a, a way to connect to you guys.
Yes, please do let us know if there is anything that, uh, we as a club can do.
I have, I have a question for Dr. Brent.
All right.
Dr. Brent, homeschooling, is that on the rise or staying level? Or do you have any, any idea on statistics?
It went up for a while, but the kids are starting to come back. It did go up for a while with COVID and then you also had a lot of families that didn't start their kindergarten or they just sat them at hell, them out a year. But we saw homeschooling go up and we, and we were seeing some of those students come back to us. Um, we'll get more data on that as the school year ends, as we start seeing what enrollment looks like for the future.
Thank you.
Dr. Brent, um, now that you have gotten the technology down to do remote, of course, um, excuse me. Remote learning, uh, there's, and I know a majority of the kids should be in school face to face, but I, I know one young man, uh, particularly, he's excelling because home atmosphere. Is there any thought or consideration of next school year? Uh, when this is all said and done, that kids would have that option?
It's going to be what the state legislature decides this session. Um, I agree. There are some students who thrive on remote and there are some students who do not need to be remote. And so I think that if they're going to fund remote learning, there needs to be some qualifying factors. Like you have to assure us that you're going to check in on a regular basis or the student needs to be showing academic progress. We've, um, over the last several years have been developing new assessment systems that show growth in students. Like, you know, the beginning of the year, middle of the year, are they making progress on their academic goals? And if they're not making that growth, then we, you know, we would need to pull you back in. So we're accountable for their academic growth. And so just letting kids go remote because they want to, I don't think it's healthy. I think kids need too much social emotional development. There is all, I mean, public schools exist to help people learn how to get along, right? And so I, I think there's a place for remote learning, but it's will the state fund it? And to what degree are they going to put controls or parameters, if you will, so you can make sure kids are making academic growth? We're not opposed to remote learning. There just needs to be some, so a lot of thought and intentionality put into what the constructs of remote learning are.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Brent. I know, uh, how busy this, uh, year has been, uh, for you all and, uh, what, uh, unique, uh, challenges you all have faced. So thank you, what you're doing for the kids in our community. Um, we, we all have to do kind of our silent clapping or hand waving to say thank you, but, uh, we appreciate you taking time to be here today and share with us how the school district is doing.
Hey, and I'll tell you one thing, if you ever want me to come back, I don't have to do a presentation. I can just sit up and hold a bottle of water and say, okay, fire away. And just ask a question. I'm always good for that. The presentation stuff's a lot of pressure. I just rather take questions. So.
That sounds good. We may have you do that.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience with me. Um, I'm a continued work in progress, but we're always going to keep trying to get better and thank you guys. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to conclude our meeting here, uh, in these last few minutes. Calendar I saw in the chat, um, going on, I think I have listed our ramp build on the wrong date. I think it got moved. So, George, do you want to give the details about our ramp build?
Certainly. Yes. The ramp build, um, due to the storm, um, was moved back a week. And the reason it was moved back, we could have done ours, you know, this coming Saturday, but, um, we're the second portion of a ramp. It's a 63-foot ramp and we're going to put the rails on it and someone else is going to build the deck. And so we need to move back to correspond with all that. And so it'll be next Saturday, March 6th, 7:30 AM, 905 Martin Avenue in Round Rock. That information is also in the chat. If you, uh, if you, if you did not get it there, if you wanted to, you know, didn't remember it as I wrote it down. And also, um, I do have a send out a text message, a group of people who would normally do ramp builds. If you're not receiving that text message, let me know. I can certainly add you to that group. So you get that message every week also from another source, um, that maybe you have it quickly on your phone where you need it.
Thank you, George. Yeah, my apologies. I think George let me know that or Myra did, and I, I lost that detail in, in getting that amended on this, the calendar. So thanks. Um, and we have, uh, of course, uh, the, our 59th anniversary on Sunday and racial unity committee next week on Thursday and our regular meeting on Friday. Just a reminder, mark your calendars for these future dates. Uh, our blood drive is on, uh, Friday, April 9th. And I understand from we are blood central Texas that, uh, they are in desperate need of donations. Um, so, uh, you certainly, if you, uh, have an opportunity to give now, you certainly can do that. That affects on, uh, the timing of whether you could give on April 9th, but, uh, let's, let's try to get a lot of people recruited to give on April 9th because it sounds like, uh, they need it. And then the multi-event bash is May 14th through 16th. I'll provide some more information about that in one of our next meetings. As, uh, we conclude this, uh, month of February, which is, uh, devoted to peace, uh, we have added our racial unity committee has added a minute of peace that we are, uh, ending our meetings with. And today's quote is going to be read by Ron Garland.
Thank you, George Ann. Today we listen to these really good words. When I say it's you I like, I'm talking about that part of you that knows that life is far more than anything you can ever see or hear or touch. That deep part of you that allows you to stand for those things without which human can, cannot survive. Love that conquers hate, peace that rises triumphant over war and justice that proves more powerful than greed from Fred Rogers.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements for the good of Rotary?
Yeah, George Ann, quickly, there was supposed to be the big car show out at the airport tomorrow. Uh, the Devil Dog was going to be there, but due to good chance of rain, it's the rain date post, uh, postponement is for, uh, next Saturday, March 6th.
All right. Very good. And, and Carolyn Holloway, do you want to make an announcement? Are you still with us? Okay. She had, uh, some information to share about an event at the Palace Theater that is honoring Doug Smith, who many of you know. Um, and so I'll see if we can't share that, uh, in another, uh, channel. Uh, because I know the palace was very good to us to provide us meeting space when we were doing our hybrid meetings and, and, uh, Doug Smith has done a lot for our community, uh, and, uh, has helped them, uh, get that, uh, children's theater built, uh, which I think is just such a great gift to the community. Any other announcements? All right then, if you would join me in the four-way test of the thing. All right, then if you would join me in the four way test of the things we think, say, or do. First.
Is it true?
Second. Third. And fourth. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great weekend.
You too.
Thanks, George Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you, George Ann.